New to the reorganization meeting of July first, two thousand twenty-five at two thirty P. M. The meeting is now called to order. I will call the roll call. Councilwoman Cotton.
Here.
Councilwoman Davila.
Present.
Councilman Jackson.
Here.
Councilman Kalik.
Here.
Councilman Mendez.
Good evening. Before my vote, I just would like to say, uh, thank you to the great city of Patterson for allowing me to serve for the last two years, your council president and my council colleague. I'm not looking to seek reelection anymore. I believe that it's time for somebody else to come and lead this council. Uh, but it's been a privilege to serve as your council president. I put my heart on this position and into the city of Patterson. Looking forward to see my councilwoman in a large main serving. My vote is yes, madam clerk.
Councilwoman Mims.
I'm here. I'm ready to serve, madam clerk.
Thank you. Councilman Omar.
Here.
Councilman Uden.
Good evening, Patterson. I'm here.
Councilman Velez.
I'm trying to fix my little fan, but it's not working.
It's working for me.
My vote is yes.
Thank you, councilman. This afternoon's prayer will be rendered by Reverend G. David Riley, Associate Minister of Highway Church of Christ, followed with a flag salute led by Sophia Alexander and Deidra Pauldo, City Council staff. Will we all stand for the prayer?
Heavenly Father, we come before you today in humble, hu- with humility and with faith, lifting up the leaders you have placed in the city of Patterson. We pray specifically over the Patterson City Council, every elected official, every staff member, every person working behind the scenes to shape the life of this city. Lord, we thank you that you are the God of order, the God of justice, the God of wisdom, and the God of mercy. And we believe that when righteous leadership is established, people flourish. Lord, so we ask you now, grant wisdom beyond human understanding to every council member. Let their decisions be rooted in truth and not in pride. Let it be rooted in service and not in ambition. Let it be rooted in integrity. Be the standard and humility be the foundation. Bring unity where there is division. Break down the walls of partisanship, ego, and confusion, and replace them with a spirit of cooperation, a spirit of peace, and a spirit of shared purpose for the good of every resident in the city of Patterson, regardless of race, background, or neighborhood. Lord, raise up righteousness, expose corruption, expose dishonesty, and expose injustice. Let transparency and accountability shine through. Surround every council member with godly counsel, wise advisors, and the courage to do what is right, even when it is hard. Lord, now breathe life into this city through them. Let the policies reflect compassion. Let the policies reflect safety. Let them reflect equity and opportunity. May they protect the vulnerable, empower the poor, and cultivate dignity for every person who calls Patterson home. And now, Lord, we boldly declare the end in the name of Jesus. We declare that the city, the Patterson City Council, is a place of wisdom and not of confusion, a place of service and not of self-interest. We declare that the righteous leaders will rise, truth will prevail, and justice will roll like a river. Through every decision made in these chambers, we declare that God's presence today will overshadow this meeting and every meeting going forth, and that Patterson will not be known for division but for transformation. We speak life over Patterson, life over every street, over every school, over every home, and over every heart. And we believe that revival can begin right here through the leadership here in Patterson. Father, let your kingdom come in Patterson. Let your will be done in this cast council on earth as it is in heaven. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. Amen. Let us remain standing for the flag salute.
To the flag
of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation
and one God, individual, where liberty and justice are.
Please remain standing. A moment of silence for our troops and for those who have lost loved ones. Thank you. You may be seated.
Madam clerk. Before we begin, this bottle of water that I had here was not sealed. I'm gonna need a new one.
Okay.
Um, if I may, if you may.
No problem. Thank you, councilman.
Uh, and more importantly, while we have the mayor here, uh, before we have another Hinchcliffe Stadium, um, debacle with people passing out, it's ninety-six degrees in here. This council has, uh, allotted money for us to have a functioning, properly functioning air conditioning. Obviously, we failed in many instances, but can we at least have some water and some, uh, you know, whatever this was that, that the attempt to, to, to provide for the council, we need to be considerate to those in, in the audience as well. Do we have enough water for everyone here, um, madam clerk?
Yes, sir.
We do? Well, if anyone needs water, please, um, please let us know, because this is ridiculous.
Thank you, councilman.
The air conditioning not functioning. Can we get an answer from the mayor? What's, what's the problem with the air conditioner?
Councilman, would you allow me to open up the meeting and then we can answer those questions later?
Absolutely, madam clerk. My apologies.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Statement of compliance, the Open Public Meetings Law, two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five meeting date, July first, two thousand twenty-five, two thirty P. M. Adequate notice of this meeting was compiled and disseminated in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law in the following manner. One, the annual meeting notice of regular meetings and workshop sessions of the municipal council was compiled for the year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five on or about July first, two thousand twenty-four. Two, a schedule of the regular meetings and workshop sessions of the municipal council for the year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five was duly transmitted on or about July first, two thousand twenty-four to the North Jersey Herald News, the Record, the Arabic Voice, the Italian Voice of Passaic County Pulse, Dominican News, La Casquea International, El Especial, the Patterson Press, the City Post News, Tap into Patterson, the Weekly Bangla Patrica, in addition to any other publication duly requesting such notices. Three, the schedule of the regular meetings and workshop sessions of the municipal council for the year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five was prominently posted in the lobby of City Hall, first floor, in the place reserved for the announcements of this type. Four, the schedule of the regular meetings and workshop sessions of the municipal council of the year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five was duly filed in the municipal clerk. Five, a copy of the schedule of regular meetings of the municipal council was mailed to any person who requested and paid the fee authorized by the Open Public Records Act. Thank you. At this time, I will call for the nominations of the office of the, of the council president.
I nominate
Councilwoman
Dr. Lelisa Mims.
I second it.
Second.
Second.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
I nominate Mims for president.
Mims.
We all say it.
No, you didn't.
Okay, who made the motion?
I made the motion.
I made the motion too, madam clerk.
To nominate Councilwoman Dr. Lelisa Mims.
I made the motion.
And Ruby Cotton seconded.
There are multiple motions. There are multiple motions on the floor as well.
Was there a second nomination?
Yes.
Cotton.
Cotton.
I did second.
Nobody.
Any other nomination? No.
Someone nominated Councilwoman Cotton. Okay. And who, who made the motion?
No. Madam clerk, I made the motion to nominate Councilwoman Dr. Lelisa Mims.
Right.
And Councilwoman Cotton seconded, and then others went on.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Correct. I motioned too.
No other nominations. Thank you.
Congratulations, advance.
If there are no more nominations.
Is there a motion to close the nomination?
Motion to close.
Second.
Okay. Who motioned?
I motioned.
I motioned too.
Okay. Motion by Uden Velez was seconded by? Councilman Mendez. Okay. Roll call to close the nomination for the council president. Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davila?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilman Mendez?
Mendez.
Councilman?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Omar?
Yes.
Councilman Uden?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Velez. The votes are nine in favor, none against.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
We, we haven't voted yet. We haven't voted yet. We just closed the nomination.
Uh, excuse me.
We haven't voted yet.
I believe that was to close the nomination. Madam clerk, I think that was to close the nomination.
Thank you.
Ms. Alexander.
We have to do the roll call.
We, we'll, we'll celebrate, but just in a few minutes, just in a few minutes.
Alexander, we haven't voted.
Roll call for the nomination.
You could turn off the microphone, the mayor.
I'm sorry.
Get confused here.
Not yet. We haven't voted yet.
Oh, she gotta wait very much. One second.
We gotta vote.
Roll call for the roll call for the election of, um, Councilwoman Lelisa Mims, Councilwoman Dr. Lelisa Mims, Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davila?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, madam clerk. So, uh, uh, acknowledging that, um, this is a bit of an, out of the norm. It would normally be a, uh, a tussle, but obviously there was, um, concessions or, or, let me see, a, um, an agreement. That's not the right word either. But, um, an understanding made prior to today, which I respect, I appreciate it. I think this is the first time it was been done. I take my hat off to, uh, Dr. Mims for, um, pulling this off. I was actually prepared to barter for my vote today. I see my vote's not gonna make much of a difference, but I still will place my concerns, or let me say, my demands on the floor. Because whomever receives the council presidency, as we watch those who have come before today fail us greatly, um, I think it's important. It's important to understand the responsibilities and the duties of this council, that we have a responsibility in holding the administration accountable. So, with that being said, I mean, I have three, three requests. I just wanna make them public because I will continuously badger on them. Um, and that is holding the administration accountable for reports. Reports on spending, reports on the forty million dollars that was misappropriated from the PRC, reports on the A R P money. Where is that money? How's it been spent? Who has it in their pocket? Reports on the hundred and ten million dollars at Hinchcliffe Stadium. We still have not received reports on the spending of this money. So, whoever was up for council presidency, I was, you know, I thought that it would be like in years past, it'd be like four, four, I'll be one of this deciding, but I still wanted to make it public for the public's consumption, that I think whomever becomes the president, that this council has a responsibility in holding this administration accountable. And our first priority is our budget and our spending, and those three items, I think, are major, uh, priorities. The PRC, the A R P money, meaning the money that was given to the city, eighty million dollars for, uh, CARES Act, and a hundred and ten million dollars in spending at the stadium. We still don't know where that money is, and I wanna know, and I'm hoping that our new council president would like to know as well. Madam clerk, with that being said, my vote is yes.
Thank you, councilman. Councilman Kalik?
My vote is yes, madam clerk.
Thank you. Councilman Mendez? Thank you.
My vote is yes, madam clerk.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mims?
To my mother who is present and two of my sons, it is an honor and a privilege to accept the responsibility and the leadership, um, role of being the city council president. I wanna thank, um, Councilwoman Davila, Councilwoman Cotton, Councilman Kalik, Councilman, um, Omar, as well as Councilman Jackson, Councilman Mendez, uh, Councilman Uden, and Councilman Velez for your vote of confidence. Um, and I'll give a speech later, but it's time to move this city forward. My vote is yes, and I accept the, um, nomination.
Thank you. Councilman Omar?
Yes.
Councilman Uden?
My vote is absolutely yes, because I supported you before, and I'm, one more time, I like to see that changing leadership, and I'm very, uh, optimistic that that change is going to bring, um, excellence here in the chamber. So, I'll speak more, but absolutely, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilman Velez?
So, sitting here eight years in the council, and in six, working with Councilwoman, uh, Dr. D- Dr. Lelisa Mims, the most important things of today is, I was praying for this moment, because a lot of people in the city, when they come here and when they out there, they say they wanna see change in the community, they wanna see change in the council. And I know that every decision that she gonna make, she gonna consult this with high, high lord up there. So, I know she gonna bring that peace to the council, so, uh, my vote of confidence are way back. Uh, so, Councilwoman Mims, congratulations, and my vote is yes.
Thank you, councilman. The votes are nine in favor, none against. Councilwoman Dr. Lelisa Mims is the council president. Patterson, New Jersey. Thank you very much. At this time, we will call for the nomination of the council vice president.
I nominate Councilwoman Maritza Davila for vice president.
I nominate Councilwoman Velez for vice president.
I second Velez for second.
Okay. One second. Okay. All right. So, we had a motion for Councilwoman Davila.
I nominate Councilman Omar.
I appreciate it, council, but I decline.
All right. We're gonna have to go back over this. Also, we have a motion for Councilwoman Davila, and we have, um,
A second.
Second. I'm sorry. You second. Okay. And then we have one for?
Motion for Council, uh, Councilman Velez.
Velez, okay.
And I, uh, the motion by Councilman Mendez.
Okay.
And seconded by myself.
Move to close nominations. Okay. And we had a nomination for Councilman Omar?
No.
By Councilman Jackson? You declined? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Just two nominations.
Okay.
Move to close nominations.
Okay.
Second.
Who's second?
Move second by
Mims? Okay, thank you. Motion to close the nomination, motion by Councilwoman Davila, seconded by Councilwoman Mims, Councilwoman Cotton?
To close nomination.
Motion to close the motion. I mean, nomination. Motion to close.
Move to close.
Madam clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davila?
Yes, to close nominations.
Okay. Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilwoman, Councilman Mims?
No.
No.
Councilman Mendez, sorry.
Yes. Yes, to close, madam clerk.
Gonna take some getting used to. Sorry. Councilman Omar?
Yes, to close.
Councilman Uden?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
Yes.
Council president? Council president?
Yes.
Thank you very much. The, the votes are nine in favor, nine against. We have a new council vice president.
No, no. We're just closing.
I'm sorry.
We're just closing.
We have the vote on the first nomination.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. And now we move to, um, roll call for, uh, would, roll call for the nomination of the council vice president?
Roll call for Councilwoman Davila for, um, vice president.
Roll call for the nominations of the council, vice president for Councilwoman Davila. Um, Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Da- Davila?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Pass.
Councilman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilman Mendez?
No.
Councilman Omar?
Yes.
Councilman Uden?
No.
Councilman Velez?
They put me in this big situation here, huh? And I gotta explain later on why my vote. Uh, my vote is no.
Okay. Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Okay.
Council president? No, council president. I think they
There's done.
Council president.
I think they all voted.
Now, Mims has to
Council president?
I said council president.
Yes. So, let me, let me say this. Councilwoman Davila, you are a woman of your word. I am going to say it. She, no, I'm the last vote. I'm voting. No. So, I just wanna say you are a woman of your word. You s- There's many things I can say, but I'm gonna say that. You are a woman of your word. You deserve to, uh, serve here not only as, uh, vice president, but there's many things that we're gonna do. There's nothing like coming together, being people of your word, and sticking to it. Madam clerk, my vote for Councilwoman Davila is absolutely yes to be my vice president.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The votes are six in favor, three against. Councilwoman Davila is hereby nominated as the council's pres- vice president. Council president? Council president, may we proceed with the presentations of the outgoing president?
Yes. So, uh, thank you, madam clerk. So, there's a few things that we're gonna do. One, um, I will do a presentation to our outgoing, um, president. I'll come there. So, Council, um, Councilman Mendez, and then our ladies will come and present me with the gavel. And then right after that, there's a lot of presentations, so just stand right there, and then we're gonna call you up next in line, okay? Thank you. Thank you to my third ward, councilman. So, I just wanna say, uh, Councilman Mendez, you have served for the last two years and have led this council. We appreciate your leadership and your service. I look forward to working with you. Let's continue to make Patterson better. Thank you so much for your service.
Let me see what I can do. Thank you. Thank you. It's definitely, it's been a great honor for me to serve in this position as council president. This position teach me and help me to work with people that didn't like me, with people that hurt me in the past, with people that, you know, really tried to put me down, but that position helped me to put things aside and think about the city of Patterson, and love the city of Patterson, and make the right decision for a resident. I'm looking forward, my council president, to work with you. You know, I'm a phone call away, and I'm all about teamwork. Patterson is a great city, but we have a lot of work to do ahead of us to make Patterson the right place for every resident of this great city. May God bless our city. Thank you.
To my council ladies. The ladies in white and red.
So, I wanna thank everyone. Councilwoman Mims, weeks ago, we spoke, and I said that we needed to be the change that we want to see. This isn't not about eagles. This isn't not about I do it better. This is not about the chair is mine. This is about coming together and understanding that the city needs change. And we got together, and Councilwoman Cotton, she was very instrumental. We both met, and we understood that we are in a society where, you know, men dominate, but women get the job done. As mothers, as daughters, as wives, as sisters, as nieces, as leaders. And so, it gives me great pleasure to have supported you not by mouth, but by actions. Actions speak louder than words. God bless you. I'm looking forward to your leadership. I hope that you do not have to use this, but if you do, you make sure that you do it first, knowing and doing what's right. Congratulations. Thank you, thank you, thank you. As I said, as we got together, you know, I always said that we women wear many hats, many hats. We take care of families, we take care of grandparents, we take care of children, we take care of our community, the calls that come through our phones, but we are about taking care of people. And it's about taking care of people and answering their calls and to see what they need, how I can do, how I can help. And I can say, you can beat me down all you want, but God got my back, and I know he got my back. He got Councilwoman Mims back, he got Councilwoman Davila back. We work hard for our community. And Councilwoman Mims, this has been a long time, six years. God said, never give up, 'cause it will come. Never give up, 'cause it will come. That yes is coming somewhere in here, and it came today. Amen. Thank you. God bless you all for coming out.
Council colleagues, let's take a quick photo in the middle.
That was good. I think she said council colleagues. Eventually, eventually.
Council president? Madam president?
That was funny.
Council president, on behalf I'm, I'm sorry.
Before we get started, I just, well, like myself, uh, and council vice president, and of course, the mayor's here, just to give a few words, but number one, I just wanna say, to God be the glory, for the great things that he has done, he is doing, and he, he shall do. One of the things that continues to ring, and we talked about it, um, over a month and a half ago, when we first met, myself, Councilwoman Dav- Davila, Councilwoman Cotton, and it kept ringing about being the change that we want to see. We cannot talk about the narrative of the negativity of our city without looking for a brighter and a better Patterson. And so, if we want to see that, we have to be the change that we want to see, and it must start within us. So, here's a few things that will be starting immediately. Public portion. Workshops, the list, public portion list will be out at six fifteen. It will be pulled at seven fifteen. It will only be out for an hour. For the regular meetings, it will be out at six forty-five, and it will be pulled at seven forty-five. That gives everyone a full hour to come in, sign in. That way, we can continue to hear what the residents are That way, we can continue to hear what the residents are requesting or what their concerns are. We will be starting and implementing a new process through our BA, where all of your requests and concerns, they will be answered. We will have them posted on our website, and they will be on the podium, so that whatever your concerns were the week before, you will have answers before you come back the following week. The second thing is, we would like to see professional decorum here in these chambers. I understand that we get frustrated, and there's a lot of things that go on, and we get upset, but the profanity and the disrespect will not be tolerated. We, as the City Council, we will respect the public, and the public shall respect the City Council. Many people are watching, many people have spoke negatively about the actions and the decorum in the chambers. It starts next week, where we will start a professional decorum in these chambers. Thank you to all of my family and friends that are here. My mom, if you will stand, my mom is here. Dr. Evelina. My mother had a stroke, lost all movement of her left side. God raised her up, and then during COVID, she almost died, and God raised her up again. And so, for her to experience and to see this while she is yet alive is yet a blessing. I was feeling sad because I have one daughter and three sons, and I was saying, none of my kids are gonna be able to come, 'cause my daughter got promoted. Today's her first day as Principal in Maryland, and all my sons were working. And then, I get a text message while I'm at work today. My youngest son said, "Mom, I'm calling in." I told him, "I can't come, I gotta celebrate my mom." Him and my 28-year-old, I think my 20-year-old just ran back, but if my youngest son will stand, he's gonna represent the boys. He just made employee of the month on his job. And my son, if you need furniture, Raymore and Flanagan. And so, I just wanna say to my mentor, Assemblywoman Evans, uh, my godmother's here, L K Banks, my boss twice, Ms. Rivella, who's the principal now of Kennedy High School, my Vice Principal, Ms. Carino, um, and to my family, friends, and every loved ones that are here, thank you so much, my ladies from ICPC. Thank you, everyone, for your support, your love, and your encouragement. We shall move this city forward together. It is our belief that we will work together as a council, we will work with our administration, and we wanna hear from the public. Let's move forward, let's do great, and let's be the change we wanna see. Thank you once again. Council Vice President.
So, I, I will be brief, since I did have a moment when we were handing over the gavel. Uh, once again, I'm looking forward to this here. Let us understand, because I had someone say to me, you know, politics makes strange bedfellows. And, you know, I didn't get offended by that, right? I thought about, you know, how true it is, right? The only thing that I would change is, I'm not in bed with anyone, right? I believe that when you wanna see change, you have to pivot, right? And we can't talk about change, 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 and, and we don't do anything about it. And so, you know, um, for those that don't like, for someone to use, I've been praying, yes, I was praying, and I was asking for a signal, and that signal was, because everyone here knows that I was going to vie for the Council Presidency. The outgoing President was fully aware of it. Unfortunately, he did not, he wanted to continue in the seat, and I understand, he did a good job, so we're not here to talk on any ill, but to say you did a good job in your two years, but it was time to pivot. And, you know, with that said, you see here, the, the, uh, family and friends that are here, um, we knew what we were coming to do, and again, those that voted know, I'm okay with that, because in my book, I've changed and I've passed a page. It's a new chapter, it's a new day, it's a new year here in the city of Patterson through leadership, through our Dr., our Councilwoman, Dr. Lisa Mims, and I'm looking forward to working as I have been, all right? Because a lot of people think that, you know, divide and conquer, so you start all the gossiping and all the things, the back and forth to divide. I'm not here to do that. I'm here to stand with Councilwoman Jackson. Councilwoman Jackson has a lot, a lot of true things that he says. It is true, okay? But I believe that there's a time and place for everything, right? And I, and I'm a little different when it comes to delivery. Um, I've changed in my almost 12 years being here. Anyone that, that knows me from day one, I had a previous Councilman of the Third Ward tell me, "Councilwoman, you can't wear your feelings in your sleeves," okay? And, um, you know, with that said, um, I'm gonna, I'm going to listen to my second ward councilman, and I'm gonna cut it short, but I just wanted to say that, that it's a new day, and I'm happy to be here, and you can always count on me, I'm only a phone call away. So, thank you so much, Council President-
Thank you, Council Vice President.
Thank you.
Um, Mayor, please briefly, so we can get, we only have a few, uh, people for public portion, and then, we wanna go right into the quick agenda on today.
Thank you, Council President, and I like the sound of that. It dawned upon me that in all my years, especially since we established the position of Vice President about 10 years ago by way of ordinance, I cannot recall ever having a woman as a President and a woman as a Vice President. Yes, women do rock, and now, they're in power. And Councilwoman Mims, you often say that we're better together, and that's primarily why I'm here, so that we make sure that what you've said in the past manifests, so that we know that we are better together, that we must be united. There's no point in fighting each other. We should fight with each other for the city of Patterson. We should fight to get our roads resurfaced. As a matter of fact, I'm here today to tell everyone that on the agenda, there's 34, 35 more streets that are scheduled to be repaved, and a total of 85 streets will be paved by the time the next reorganization meeting comes around. It's ironic that these two ladies are now respectively President and Vice President, because it was in 2018 when we applied for a grant to go to Chattanooga, Tennessee, and the two council representatives were our Council President and Council Vice President. And after that, that essentially sparked the movement that has led to over $116 million invested in improving playgrounds, parks, and other public spaces in our city. So, we have a track record of working together. Now, let's do it better. But I re- I would be remiss, I do want to thank Councilman Alex Mendez for his service as Council President. He and I in the past have been at odds, but again, we were able to put our differences aside in the best interest of the people we serve, the Pattersonians. And so, Councilman, I did enjoy working with you and making sure that we did advance a very positive agenda for our city, whether it was resurfacing roads, or social programs like the Financial Empowerment Center, or improving all of these parks that our children can enjoy now and hopefully forever. And so, I salute our new leadership team here, our historic leadership team in the city of Patterson, and I hope that what our Council President has said as far as decorum, civility, professionalism, it holds true, and that everyone adheres to what you have said, Council President, that we wanna start off on the right foot, and that means civility, decorum, and professionalism here in the City Council chambers and everywhere in this city, because people are watching, as a matter of fact, children are watching, and we don't wanna subject them to anything that we definitely would not want to have happen to our children. So, ladies and gentlemen, I congratulate our new leadership team, and I look forward to the following year to continue to position Patterson for progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Madam Clerk, we will now open the floor for the-
Council President.
-public portion. How many speakers do we have, Madam Clerk?
We have 10 people.
10 people. Madam Clerk, can you call the first speaker?
Actually, Council President-
Council President.
I did wanna address, uh, the councilman's concern relative to the air conditioning-
Matt, Mayor, one second.
Yes.
Just a point of order, uh, Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. Uh, obviously, it, it, I guess it slipped the mayor's mind, as the third largest city in the state of New Jersey, how we don't have functioning air conditioning, and, uh, we appreciate him showing up today, but relative to him showing up because of his appreciation as, never mind, I'm not even really gonna go into much of that. It, it's just shameful that we have all the failures that we do. I mean, there's 80 new roads, but I would, I would like to know, like a complete report on how much we're spending on all those roads being paved, but more importantly, how much did we spend on this air conditioner over a year ago, and we still don't have functioning air, air conditioning?
Well, as far as the air conditioning is concerned-
Mayor-
Yes, yes.
Part, point of order. We're not gonna do a rebuttal, because we have, there's no air conditioner working, and we have a lot of seniors in this audience, and I want them to be able-
Yeah.
Let's get through the agenda.
But may I just say, July 8th, this Tuesday, it's scheduled to be repaired.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so, just before our first speaker is called, there is a three-minute, uh, rule in our chambers, so I would like it for, from this point forward, there's no such thing as coming to the mic and saying, "Can you extend my time?" I would like it if you want additional time, that you call my office, the secretary's office, the day before, you make the request, so that we can make the accommodations and have enough time during our council meeting. So, today, please, we're asking that you stick to three minutes. Um, Madam Clerk, may you call the first speaker?
Yes, Council President. First speaker is Eddie Olivares. State your name, please.
Patterson resident. Um, today, I am the first speaker, so I get to set the tone. I don't, okay, so restart the time, I don't know.
The mic is on, Mr. Olivares. Um, Madam Clerk, can you just restart his time? Can, can you restart his time, Madam Clerk?
I will, I will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, before we start, I would like to, once again, congratulate the officers that were promoted, uh, yesterday. Uh, the police officers that were promoted yesterday, well deserved. And I want to thank the chief for being here today. The, uh, I have good news and I have bad news for the people of Patterson. The bad, you got it. The bad news is that with this new arrangement, we can guarantee that nothing will change in the city. The filth, the drugs, the shootings, the crimes, everything will stay as it is. And, Mr. Mayor, I must say that there was a time when I supported you, uh, but under your leadership, the city's in shambles. I am not in the business of predicting, but I will do everything within my power to make sure that you lose. I will do the same for the coming up, of the three coming up council members. I will do everything within my power to make sure that you do not win, because you, the city, again, is in shambles under your leadership. And so, it's more of the same, that's what we're gonna get with this new, uh, arrangement. Dr. Mims, you talk about respect. I'm not talking for the people of Patterson, I speak for myself. I do not respect this council. The only person that I respect on this council is Councilman Jackson. It's a man of his word, integrity, I respect him. The rest of you, I have no respect for. I don't care how many different ways you can ask for respect, you're not getting it from me. Well, I shouldn't say that. You can't get respect from me, but I'll tell you what it is. You're a city employee. I remember a time when you said, "Well, we should be treated like queens." No, we will not treat you like queens. You're a city employee, that's all you are to us. You work for us. The only way you could get my respect is if you improve the conditions of the city of Patterson. That's it. That's what we hire you to do. It's the only way that you could get my respect. So, this year, the decorum and all of that, it's too bad, but the new rules are not on paper, because I would've ripped it, huh? No. The answer is no. You will get no respect from me until you show me that you can fix the city of Patterson. And so, um, Mr. Mayor, to say that you're working with Alex Mendez on behalf of the city of Patterson, it doesn't show. The city is getting worse by the day. So, this combo, this new combo, it's a mess.
Thank you, Mr. Olivares. Next speaker, Madam Clerk, please.
The next speaker is Wahida Mohammed. Kindly state your name.
My name, Wahida Mohammed. First, I wanna thank you, Councilman Jackson, for giving us some water, 'cause when we got here today, a sign on the door said, "We can't even bring water or food in here." I don't mind not bringing food, but we couldn't have water, so thank you. The other thing I wanna say, Council President, you just announced that you will now take the sheet away, and people that come in from work won't get here in time to say something. So, you already telling us whether or not we have anything to say, you're gonna take the sheet regardless. To me, that is a slap in the face and not the way to start a new era of this city, being respectful to your constituents, because we're all not gonna be able to get here in time for you to snatch the, the sheet. And then, we do what? We get up here, we say something that's disrespectful, and then, you have a problem with that. I think you should reconsider that, but I know that you all do what you wanna do, when you wanna do it, and we have nothing to say about it until the election. The last thing I wanna say is, I appreciate the fact that, no, I don't appreciate the fact that this meeting, I've got something that said it was gonna start at 12 noon. The reorg meeting was gonna start at 12 noon. So, I was here, because I wanted to be here, because I have another venue, but I was told by Madam, uh, Deputy Clerk that that was, that was not the case, mm-mm. So, I don't know how it got mixed up, or if it's mixed up, but if you could tell me now, if this is the way it's gonna be from now on, that meeting in July will only happen at 2:30.
You're, you're done, Madam, Ms. Wh-
Yeah.
Okay. So, just to respond, so first and foremost, I did not say I was gonna take the sheet. I stated that the sheet will be up for one hour. If the workshop meetings are at 6:30, the sheet will be there from 6:15 to 7:15. The meetings that are at 7, it will be there from 6:45 to 7:45. I'm never going to take the sheet away, because we wanna hear from the public. However, I will not allow public to come in at 10:00 PM after we've been here for three and a half hours wanting to speak. There should be a proper protocol in place, that this is the protocol we established, that an hour is, is well enough time for anyone that wants to come in to speak. The meetings are published, it is at 6:30 for workshop, 7 o'clock for regular meetings. The second thing, even on tonight, our agenda item, and I believe it's item number one, on the agenda, every year, we vote on the calendar, and last year, on July 1st, we voted on the calendar, and it stated that this meeting will be at 2:30. So, every July 1st, the dates and the times are listed, and last year, on July 1st, today's meeting was voted on last year. Thank you, Ms. Wahida. Next speaker, Madam Clerk?
Yes, the next speaker is Eval, Eva Razak, I'm sorry.
Hi, Ms. Razak. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everyone. God bless everyone for being here, my constituents, I love you very much. Well, I'm not gonna be a deadbeat nanny. I'm gonna say congratulations for three wonderful women who are really wanting to work. I have to say something. You guys are never gonna hear me come up on this mic and go off on you guys. If I have to say something, I'll call you, and we, we can dialogue it, 'cause I know I kinda crank it up sometimes, but you guys know I don't mean, I don't mean bad. Now, here it is. Yes, we get a lot of complaints that the city's doing this, the city doing this, but here it is. You guys can be held accountable just all of it, because we have residents in the town that you're, you're driving and they're throwing things out their cars, they're not being, they're not being clean. But I have something to say. The longer that we continue to fight with each other and knock each other down, you guys are always with each other anyway, all the time. So, how in the world are you gonna screw somebody and say, "I didn't screw you," when you know what you are doing? Let's be more humble, let's be more caring, let's be more understanding, because you see everybody who's out here? Nobody's fool. They know what time it is, we know what time- Hi, Bobby, I love you. He's down there, ooh, take a picture. No, but once again, my three ladies, Ruby, and I have to say something to Ruby, there's not one time that I don't call, and I don't know something, but I call, and Ruby answers. I thank you. Marissa, you do too. Sid, uh, Ms. Mims, you do too. After the fact, 'cause I know you're working, Mama. All right, you guys, some of the men, y'all better answer the phone. Thank you, Mr. Velas, you answer the phone- Thank you, Mr. Ellis, you answer the phone too. No, but besides the point, no joke, Pattersonians, we all need to stick with each other, doesn't matter what color, how we look, or who we are, because remember something, the day that something really goes on, and you're not talking to your neighbor, or you, or you think you're better than that neighbor, you're doomed. We all want love. I just got cold saying that. But me saying this, I'm, I'm, I'm one of the commissioners for the Patterson Task Force, but I don't need a title to serve my residents. I love you guys, we all need each other, we all need to believe in each other, and women, please, women, this is for the women, forget about the men, the women, the women, the women. We cannot keep destroying each other. The more we destroy, the more the men win. And remember, and I don't need to be rude, men are easy to lay us down, they're not so quick to lift us up. Only real men will lift you up. So ladies, instead of hating each other and saying, oh, and ah, and uh, uno, here, let me help you, what do you need? What can we do? One love. So again, thank you, Mayor. I'm so happy to see you, Bobby, there. You look so cute. No, but I really, Bobby, you really look good there in your spot. But thank you, everybody, and thank my residents, and let's all stay together and love each other, and whatever we can do with each other, just serve. I love you all. Thank you once again, God bless us, and God bless the city. Mims, woman power, you rock.
Thank you, Commissioner, I love you.
Three minutes in time, babe.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Sonia Wilson. Please state your name.
My so roar. Sonia Wilson, Patterson, New Jersey. Greetings, newly-elected council president to the council members. My name is Sonia Wilson, representing Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, the Patterson Alumni Chapter. On behalf of myself, as the chair for our Hospitality and Courtesy Committee, our president, Jalen Lyd, our, and the ladies of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, we want to congratulate you on your new appointment. We know that you will do a wonderful job, and these flowers are for you.
You know, grab those. Grab our flowers. She's going to bring them around. Okay. Thank you to the ladies of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Council President, the next speaker is Dr. Everline.
Yes, my mama. Come on, ma.
Please state your name.
My name is Dr. Everline Sumper Brown, and I'm here to congratulate my daughter on her win today. And I just want to say to all the council, I want to say first, give an honor to the mayor and to all the council, but what I want to say, people come to the mic and they talk all this negativity, but I remember my mother always taught me, there was, a mother could raise ten children, but ten children could not take care of mother. So it'd take a village to raise a child, so I think it takes the whole city to change this city. We come up and talk negativity about the council, the council can only do so much. I mean, sometime, I don't even get to talk to my daughter, because they have her so bogged down with things that's going on in the city. I'm not complaining, I'm glad she's able to help. But it takes the whole city working together with the council and the mayor to turn this city around. Because some of the same people that get up and talk all this negativity, their children are some of the same ones that's creating the habit. So I'm just saying, let's all work together, because the Bible, Psalms 37 and 24 say, a good man's footsteps is ordered by God. So let's make sure God orders our footsteps, he orders what we say, what we do, and I mean, Mr. President, Council Jackson, I don't have nothing against you, but every time they come to the mic, you the only council person that does anything. That's not true. My daughter works tirelessly helping this city, because I don't even get time sometime to have a meal with her. But I appreciate what you do for the city, I appreciate for all, what all of you do for the city. But let's come together as a council, at a city, not one person, but a whole city, to change this city. Look at your own households, your children, the people next door to you minister, talk to them, mentor them, have, have them to clean up. We can do this. The whole city got to come together, though it's not only the council, it's not only the mayor, they have their jobs to do, but it still takes the whole city to change this city. God bless.
Thank you, mother. Thank you, mother. You understood the assignment. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Chanel Fields. State your name, please.
Good afternoon, Ms. Fields.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. It's now Dr. Chanel Fields, thank you. Congratulations, Mims, on your win, and congratulations, Davila, Mims. I just want to say, please reconsider the one-hour time slot, only because there are parents with the excessive rents that are going on in Patterson that work more than one job. And with working more than one job, some of them struggle. I know, because I pick people up that want to come here, that don't even have a car, that have to take public transportation to get here. So please reconsider that. I get that, you want to do one hour, you guys want to be out at a decent time and things like that, but there are people that press their way like church to be here to help change the city, so I would encourage you to extend that time. That's all I have to say about that. To the mayor, it is about time that you chose to show up here. There are so many things that this city needs, there are so many issues that are pressing. I would like to know, I hear you saying that more streets are going to be paved, is that in the second and the sixth ward? Or is that in every ward?
No, no rebuttal.
Okay, so we already know that's one of my questions. And then also, will you be coming to the meetings more often? As a leader in the city, it helps to see the leader of this city be present. And not just present, but present, because you can be present without being present. You can be around the city, but not involved in the things that we have that are pressing. So we would like to see you more diligent amongst those who are not the elites of Patterson, but all of Patterson. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. And just to answer, item number seven, it's in the agenda, I'll let you get a copy of it, you'll see the list of the addresses of what streets will be repaved after we vote on it. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is, I believe that's Tammy and Ladies. Please state your name.
Tammy Gray, residence of the city of Patterson for over 56 years. First of all, I want to say thank you to each and every one of you, each and every council member, we appreciate your hard work, and I have, I have to say, I appreciate your tough skin, because it's tough sitting in those seats and taking the words that you get from the community. Please don't take it personal, because I'm thinking that they don't mean it personally. They're just coming after somebody, because you guys are the only go-to people that they have to go to. So we appreciate your hard work, Mayor Andre, we appreciate all that you do as well.
Thank you.
My business here today is to thank Councilwoman Mims and Councilwoman Davila for, it's just a thought of wanting to do, to be in those seats to move the city forward. The city has a lot of issues that we know. We're not going to sugarcoat it, we have some problems on every street, every corner, but I do believe that the two of you working together, that you guys can be the change that is needed. I believe that you guys can work together and move the city forward. And with that being said, and Ms. Cotton as well, I believe that all of you and the men can move the city forward. We're looking for unity, we want you guys to come together. You know, it's hard to sit back and listen to you guys tear each other apart on the mic, as a team. So if one person's not playing good on a team, the whole team looks bad. When you point a finger at one of your teammates, that's not what you're supposed to be doing, you're supposed to be working together, encouraging, encouraging each other so that we can get a better team. So I'm asking that you guys do that going forward. Please, have those conversations privately. We don't need to know all the issues and schisms that's going on within the city. We got enough on our plate as working citizens in the city of Patterson, but your job that we elected you to do is to come together, work together, and fix the issues, so that we don't have to come here and be on the mic and you guys here to 3:00 in the morning. We don't want that, we know that you guys have other engagements, other jobs, and other things, family, and other things to do. So just do me a favor, work together and get the job done. However, Dr. Mims, I'm here to celebrate you, and Dr. Dav, I mean, Marissa Davila, I'm here to celebrate you, and I have a few women here, we have flowers, we want you to get, we want to give you your flowers while you can smell them, and we know that you can move the city forward. We're looking forward to you, and whatever we can do to support you, please reach out to us.
Thank you, Team Mims, ladies in purple.
Thank you.
Elda Kaye Banks, President of Passaic County, Monja Plus Women.
Amen, okay, amen. I don't have to introduce myself now, but I am the President of the Passaic County African-American Women, where Dr. Lalisa Mims and Ruby Cotton is a member. And, does that on her talk?
I extended it because you're there, so.
Okay, but we just wanted to say congratulations, thank you for the councilmen, the councilpeople, councilwomen, the mayor, and all those who formed this great city.
Yes.
And, you know, we want to give honor to Mendez for his great work and what all he has done. But I am born, raised in Patterson. My father was strategic in the Democratic Party, helping get a lot of these elected, but that was back in the day. And I just want to thank each and every one for all that you're doing, because I'm back now in the city, so I thank God that I'm able to serve and work with you, and thank you so much, and we appreciate you. God bless.
Thank you, ladies. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Bilal Hakim. Please state your name.
Good afternoon, Mr. Bilal.
Good afternoon, Council President, and to the council, the mayor, BA, and those of you that have gathered here, haven't been here in over a year, and I just wanted to start out by saying this here. And I recite that verse from the Quran, chapter 20, Surah Taha, as a reminder that I ask that God will loosen the knot in my tongue, so that what I have to say, the hearer over there and here will receive the way I'm saying it in my heart and in my mind, because we operate on different frequencies, emotionally and rationally, and sometime, a word can cause a fight. You agree? The other thing I'll say is this here, and I, and I use it Arabic language for a reason, because you have some people that speak Arabic. [Arabic] Ibrahim Umar, the sixth ward councilman, you, you know what that means? You know what that means? A corporate council? You know what that means as well? The council president mentioned change, and I'm beckoning you to change yourself. As Michael Jackson said, look in the mirror, look at yourself. You cannot bring out the beauty unless you address the ugly. And I'm saying that, and there's a broad application, because we say, we don't want to talk about that which we see as ugly. You have to address it. There are two types of criticism, constructive and destructive. Leadership is a burden. Leadership is a burden. And a person that assumes position of leadership, especially over the lives of people, if you're not careful how you handle your positions of power, you will lose it in the end, and you cause unjust problems in the society that you're trying to govern. I watched these council meetings for over a year, I'm very disappointed with a lot of the things I've seen. Don't have enough time to talk about it, but I did want to stop here. I'm walking with a stick, somebody called me Moses, but I'm not Moses, but I was injured, and I'm healing. But I will be back in these here chambers to address issues and call you to accountability. The last thing, and I'm away from the mic, Council President, we can't separate that which is inseparable, talking about the male and the female, because I hear a lot of talk about.
Thank you, Mr. Hakim.
If men, if men would come here and say, it's about men, men, then people will be up in the roar, but I get where you're coming from. We can't separate that which is inseparable, we need both of you, working together.
Thank you, Mr. Hakim. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Myra Torres.
Good afternoon, Ms. Torres.
State your name, please.
Myra Torres, Patterson resident. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor Sandro, Andres, Administration, and each and every one of the council people here, our clerks, okay, secretaries, because without you, we can't move forward. So I just want to say something from Proverbs, chapter 31, verse 25, says, "She is clothed with strength and dignity; she can laugh at the days to come." Laugh at the days to come also means hardship. You're going to be criticized, not only because you're a woman, not only because you're a Black American, but because you have faith. Same thing to you, Councilwoman Davila. And I, I do give honor, I was raised in church, I believe men being the head, women having her place also. But I think that when God called a woman and a man together, it was to make a family, to join, to unite, to work together, to strive together, okay? Because we came from right here. We can blame everyone here, and no one. I mean, the mayor can only do but so much, administration can do so much, and you can only do but so much. We have to come together as a community also to help you. I can criticize you all I want, but does that do anything for anyone? It just tells you that I'm frustrated, that I'm feeling miserable right now with what's going on, and you should know that. But I also come, I think when we come to you and you just listen, and let's try to resolve something, let's come to some kind of accord. I work here, I'm a, you know, I'm part of the staff, so I understand and I see a lot and I hear a lot. All I can say is, God bless each and every one of you, it's a new year, I hope you can get together and really work with each other. I hope you can get together and really work with each other. I have no criticism from anyone, because the first one I would criticize is Ms. Davila. And she knows that I come down hard on her, because I start from my home. She's part of my home. So all I can say is God bless to each and every one of you. Strive to work together. You're not going to have to agree on everything, but at least come to some consensus, and it doesn't all have to be public and ugly. So that being said, I also want to give Dr. Mims and Marissa a little something. I'll have the zoning secretary, Bianca DeCando, and vice chairwoman Minero from zoning, just a little gift of appreciation from us.
Thank you, Ms. Torres, and ladies from our Zone Board of Adjustments. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Yes, next speaker is Marvin Rivas.
How many speakers?
Welcome, Deputy Mayor Rivas.
All the time they forgot my name, Maria Rivas. Sorry about that. Good afternoon to everyone. What is your price, honestly? But God is good. Chamber is taken by two women, strong women, and support for a tear woman. Councilwoman Cotton, thank you so much. It's time to work together, because our city needs you. Alliant together, our community need you. We know hate. Our community need you. We love. Thank you, Mayor, and keep it strong. Patterson have a lot to do. Councilwoman Lalisa Mims, you know I love you very much. You are the president now. Council Vice President, woman, Marissa Davila, thank you so much for all you do. And I am very happy that you take this chamber, and I know you're going to do a great job. And to the rest of the councilmen, please, stand together. No hate. We don't need to see every council meeting hate each other, fight each other. Let's come together for a better city. Patterson needs you, all of you. And we're here to support you. God bless you all, and thank you so much. Keep it strong, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. We have no more speakers.
No more speakers.
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion to close by Councilman Alex Mendez, second by Councilwoman Davila, Council Vice President Davila, and Councilman Omar Roelkall to close public portion.
Roelkall to close the public portion. Councilwoman Cotton.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First, let me just say to all of you out there that came to see the reorganization meeting of the Patterson City Council. I always say that, to say to people, you want people, elected official people, that you see them somewhere, and you can walk up to them and say something. You can say hello. You can say a question. And that's what it's, to me, it's about. If you see me, you need to talk to me. But I want to say, because to me, that's part of the community. You know, I know what word I represent. And I tell people every day, I ain't scared to go nowhere in this city, because God got my back no matter where I go. But I want to say to Councilwoman Dr. Lalisa Mims, congratulations on being elected the President of the City Council. And you know, and it's been a fight. But one thing I can say for us as women, we don't be holding grudges like that. We don't be like holding grudges. We need to stop doing that. I want to say to the Vice President, Councilwoman Marissa Davila, I was the only female sitting up here in 2012. And then Councilwoman Davila came in 2014. So me and her was here together for four years, Councilwoman Davila and myself. So I want to say congratulations, as I think someone said out there, this is the first time we had two female leading the- oh, the mayor said it. The first time that I can remember, two ladies being the president and the vice president. That's, to me, is another history in the making, because I just want to say to you out there, all my council colleagues, and I've said it over and over all the time, me and you may not vote the same, but at least when you walk out here at night and learn how to say goodnight. Have a good evening. Be what you need to be. But I want to say to you all, and thank you to Councilwoman Mims, to Councilwoman Davila. It's about working together. You know, we have- we're from two different families, two different ethnic groups, but we all do care. We care about everyone. We care about the city. And I know some people have spoken. I'm not going to go into that, but, you know, I, you know, we... You know, it was my husband's birthday two days ago, and he passed in COVID. And one thing I can say about Eddie is that we walk side by side. It wasn't I wasn't in back of him, or I wasn't trying to be in front of him. We walk side by side. We were together for almost 50 years. And you know, and we learned a lot from each other. And one thing I can say is that he made sure he helped me with my family, and I made sure I helped him with his family. And you have marriages now. It is only one-sided. You can't do for the other side. But, and I appreciate my husband, because I've been around here since the '70s. But to sit here with my councilmen, I appreciate all of you. It's about just talking. And we can still talk, and we might still say no again, but it is like that. And you know, and I just want to point out Reverend LaGuarda. I got to point out Reverend LaGuarda. Because Reverend LaGuarda, Father, Father, back in 1968, when he had Dr. King was here, and I was a little girl standing on Governor Street, 12 years old at the time, couldn't get to the church, but I was close enough on Governor Street to see that, and he was the one who got Dr. King here to the city of Patterson. And every time I see him, Reverend LaGuarda, you know, he loved the community. He did everything. He loved the community, and he shared love, and he showed love, and he did everything. So I just, every time I see you, especially now, I love your two children. The little ones, they ain't little no more, but it's about togetherness. And I'm going to always be that one, growing up on a farm. If I had something to say to you, I ain't going to come to the mic with 5,000 people watching to say I'm going to blast you out. I'm not going to do that. Because my ancestor probably would jump out and hit me if I did something like that. It's about, if I need something to say, I will. But to all my council colleagues, let's just get it going. Let's just get it going to where we got to get done. Let's just get it going. Madam Clerk, with that being said, congratulations to my sisters, Dr. Lalisa Mims, President, Councilwoman Marissa Davila, Vice President. First time in history, congratulations, Madam Clerk. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Davila.
I am going to try to keep it very brief, because I can see that it is hot, and we still have not gone through the agenda. But I do want to thank Council President, because it was important to hear the community today, the public portion first. I will address a few individuals. One will be Chanel Fields, Ms. Dr. Fields. Congratulations. I do want to let you know that sometimes change doesn't come very good. But when you let people know with time, right? Slowly but surely, people will be able to come to the meeting and try to make sure that they're within that hour time. Now, I will also say to you that the Council President has, within its purview as the presidency, has the authority that she can allow anyone through the clerk to allow them to speak. So to the community, don't ever think that you're not going to be heard. If it's something that is very, it's in dire need, and you can't make that hour within the time of the sign-in sheet, please know that through the chair to our clerk, you would be able to sign up. So no one is going to be left out, okay? But we do have to keep order. Order has to be kept. There's business that has to be done. And that is across the board, wherever you go, there's always order, okay? So to everyone else, I do appreciate, to my sister for your words. She really means what she said. She says, "Order starts at home." And she does come down on me. I am the youngest. She's the oldest. People think I'm the oldest. But, you know, I appreciate her and her presence here. You know, I'd like to give you your flowers while you're alive. You've been holding it down for all of us since my mom, our mom, passed away. You know, my dad passed away, and you've been there. You've been that strong, that strong person. You've been the spine of the family. So although you're the head, you've been the spine as well. So I want to thank you for your words. I said I would call you Mama Mims, right? It's like I can't say anything, because you're Mama Mims, right? I want to thank you for your kind words as well. And to all the ladies of the different organizations, you know, to Assemblywoman Evans. You know, people don't know, people don't know our history. It was through CASA program and its executive director at the time that told me you need to speak to certain people. You were one of them. You took me under your wing. You were Assemblywoman once, when I started to get involved. And I appreciate all of the advice, and look at you now, you know, being our mentor, Councilwoman Mims and I. So thank you to everyone else. I'm here to serve. I'm not here- there's one thing that you know about me. I don't hold grudges. I don't hold grudges. There's no need for that. You can't pay, you know, you can't be in this heart, you know, free rent, rent-free. Can't, can't, can't do that, all right? So I just want to say that, you know, much love to everyone. And I'm going to continue to say, as I told our president, change starts with us. Change starts with me, and it's a new day. God bless you all. My vote is yes to close the public portion.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So just a few things I want to address to the public, and some misnomers or misconceptions. First, let me again say congratulations to all those put in place. But just for a bit of clarity, being truthful and being real about the circumstances doesn't mean you're being negative, doesn't mean you're being a fighter, doesn't mean you're fighting. Some of us took this job to celebrate. Some of us took this job to cut ribbons. Some of us took this job to talk about how great things are going. Some of us, or let me say, I took this job to do all of the opposite. Let me tell you why. Many of you know I've owned and operated a business in the city for right under 25 years. I did a million and a half, $1.4 million expansion, of which $140,000 was granted to me because I had the credit worthiness and because I had all of the required necessities from the Patterson Restoration Corporation. That entity, which operates a budget of well over $30 to $40 million, which we don't know, because we haven't gotten any reports on it over the last... I've been here for 10 years asking for them. It has not come forward. I am the only person in the history of that entity that they've taken to court and actually filed for garnishment of wages for $140,000. This entity has given more money away to other entities. Every single restaurant that opened in the mall had received from a matter of $300-plus thousand or more from this entity. And recently, it was brought to my attention that there was a proposal brought forward to that entity to actually serve its true purpose, not to buy overpriced property or real estate from friends of the mayor, the previous mayor, not this one, but he wrote it in affirmative, which we spent $6 million for a property that was worth $1 million. Possibly $1 million. So recently, a proposal was brought forward before the PRC to allot $250,000 to a program to help minority businesses, specifically black businesses during this turbulent times. That proposal was denied, as they just had given $1.3 million to another entity from Passaic. Let me remind you, the Business Incubator, that we spent millions of dollars, and we still don't have reports on. We've done walkthrough. We looked at all this equipment that we've acquired that's sitting there, that this mayor promoted. Now we're changing it over to a communication center. We're talking about millions of dollars. Why I watch 15-year-old children selling bottles of water on the bridge, sitting on coolers, because they have to make means for their way of life. So, and this is with all due respect, Mrs. Dr. Mims, truly have nothing but an enormous amount of respect for you and your family and your accomplishments that you and your children have made. But I want to dispel the fact that I don't have anyone. Ms. Fields is sitting behind you. She can vouch for this, and many people know how I do. Never. In fact, I have had conversations with Mr. Olivares about his delivery. But one thing about me, I'm not going to ask you, pay you, temper you. Your opinion is your opinion. The brother Anthony that came to the microphone, I didn't know him from a can of paint. And that was his words, as he was describing it at the African Heritage Parade. People come to this podium and state certain things. That's their beliefs. Now, I do acknowledge there are some people that pay people to come to the podium and say things. But one thing that I can show you, I can assure you, is that would not be me. I do not do that. In fact, I may encourage people not to do certain things, but they have the privilege to do so. But when we talk about the failures in this community, how many of you, and before you leave the building, Brother McKenzie, how many of you can acknowledge we got a major problem with parking? How many of you can acknowledge that our community is being overrun? It's overcrowded, where police officers are towing cars in the wee hours of the night from residents who can't barely afford their daily way of life? But yet and still, this council felt it was necessary to approve, on the consent agenda, by the way, before I got here, an ordinance to allow for those developers who want to build three-family houses on 25 by 100 footprints in the first, the fourth, and the fifth wards, mitigating adjustment board, planning board processes. They're going to be able to just put a three-family house right next door to your house, and there's nothing that you could be able to do about that.
Counsel, Jackson.
When Ms. Patricia McNeil calls me, because they're putting something next to her house that she, that they didn't even get an opportunity to sign a petition against, this is the things that I fight about.
Counsel, Jackson.
Yes?
I don't want to interrupt.
You are interrupting, though.
Disappointed privilege. I just want us to be cognitive-
I am.
-of the elders that are here.
I still haven't spoken as long as either the two before me, and you didn't say anything to them.
No, you have. You have.
I have not.
So I'm just asking. I know you have a lot to say, and it's important. People would like to hear it. But I'm just, I just would like us to be cognitive that it's very hot. You have elders that are here, and I don't want anyone passing out in the chamber. So if you could just, you know, wrap it up.
I will. I'll do my best. Thank you.
Please. Thank you.
I mean, that's something that we should have thought about before we allowed the administration not to do its job in having air conditioning properly in place. The mayor is a failure. He's failing every single day, and we're sitting here talking about, "We just work together." No, no, that's not how things go. The way things go, I've played on teams. I've gotten paid to play on teams. I've played at a very high level. I've played Division One football. I've watched my brother play on TV in the Rose Bowl. And if my brother wasn't performing, he was going to get pulled out, and his coach was going to pull him to the side and told him, "Son, you are not cutting it." This is not midget league sports, where everybody deserves a cheer and a hand, and a trophy. This is the big leagues. This is the pros, where we need to acknowledge our failures. We have to be able to clearly allow people to acknowledge their failures. Now, I'll just point this out. And I will wrap after this. But just today, and Council President, I urge you, please. Now, if you're newly adopted- Now, if you're, if you're newly adopted, um, procedure is because we don't plan to allow members of the public to wait in the chambers excessively, because there's many nights, members of the public got to sit here and wait for three hours while the council just goes through items, goes through items, decide when they're going to do the public portion. So if that's the case, and they no longer have to wait, then I would agree. If the, if the session, if the public session is going to end before they get here, then that's, that's a whole nother story. But if they're asked to wait, then, no. But just because the signing sheet is removed, when people go to ask to have their name added, after everyone sat here for three hours and waited before the session started, and then to be denied, as long as the public session is open, no one should be turned away. That's, that's, that's my perspective, and I will continue to advocate on, on residents' behalf for that. We can't pick and choose when we want to do things. We have to have a moment, we have to have levels of parity. I do agree, those young ladies that came to the microphone and spoke today, they should have been endowed with extra minutes because as the time ran out, the young lady said, "Should I go?" And you said, "No, I extended your time." But we cannot extend time to those that want to give us flowers and balloons. We got to extend the time to those who care to bring forward their, their voices of complaints as well.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes?
I, I am asking again, requesting. We have elders that are sitting in the chambers. You have spoken now for exactly 12 minutes. We are closing the public portion. I am asking, on behalf of our elders, we know it's hot. We've already addressed that the AC will be working on July 8th. And I'm asking very respectfully, if you would just vote to close out public portion. We still have seven items to vote on, and there will be many other opportunities to speak.
I'll, I'll do my best, Council President. Thank you. Appreciate the, uh, words of encouragement. And lastly, let me just say this. Those of us who come forward to, uh, be the voice of indifference, as we still don't know where the $80 million of CARES Act money is being spent, as many developers from Christopher Hope Project walking away with $40 million in developer's fees while residents are still being poorly treated, while, um, you know, we still continuously come here and celebrate and cut ribbons. There's still people in our community, we're not talking about the homeless that are being injected here from other communities. There's still people in our community that are dealing with difficult circumstances. And I'll say this, I am a voice of indifference, and I'm going to continue to be. And I don't, I don't have an issue with lining up with anyone who is looking to do that. But, um, you know, my children are not in this city. We can have it. In fact, all my children have been inducted into, every single one of them, into the National Honor Society, doing extremely well. And they're, um, they're seeing these, these poor examples as well. And they feel, um, like they deserve better, and I think that's the case as well. With that being said, Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Kalik?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Today is a new day.
Yes.
I want to, um, thank everyone for joining us today. I'm looking forward to working with our new Council President, Council VP, and rest of the council. Also, I want to thank our outgoing Council President, Alex Mendez. He has done a tremendous job for the last two years. And like I said, I'm looking forward to working with everyone. And also, I'm tired of hearing same speeches from some of the council member every single meeting. I think we, for the new year, change the rhetoric. Stay here, Padríbue, and, and come up with something new. Instead of hearing the same verses every meeting for 12, 13, 14 minutes, let's come up with some change. Thank you, Madam Clerk. My vote is yes to close the public portion.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Mendez?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So once again, congratulations to our great newly-elected Council President, Dr. Lysa Mims. It was a great honor to support you. I know you do a phenomenal job. And also to our Vice President, Councilwoman Large, Berix Adavila. Definitely, it was a phenomenal pleasure to work with all of you. And I'm looking forward to continuing this collaboration. We have a lot of work to do. We have a lot of work ahead of us to be able to improve the quality of life of our resident in the city of Patterson. We facing many challenges, and we must be sitting at the table. This, this is not about liking each other or getting along, or this is about city business. It's about putting Patterson first. And that's exactly what I'm looking forward to do, um, in this new, um, year. It's a phenomenal pleasure to see my Assemblywoman, Lysa Mims, the queen of the city of Patterson. And I do apologize for the heat, so let's, let's get the agenda done. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Omar?
Well, first, I want to congratulate our new Council President, Councilwoman Mims, our new Vice President, Councilwoman Davila. And I want to thank Councilman Mendez for all the hard work he's done these past two years. He did a phenomenal job. Thank you to the public for coming out. And I'm going to be quick because I see Assemblywoman Evans looking at me with that look. Happy heavenly birthday to Ed Cotton. And I'm happy to serve with his better half, Councilman Cotton. And congratulations, Dr. Fields. We're going to get used to saying that. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councilman Newton?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First of all, I'd like to sincerely congratulate our new Council President, Dr. Mims, and Council Vice President, Councilman Davila. And I believe that this is not just a time to just welcoming new leadership team, but also to reflect on our shared perspective, shared vision for the next one year for the city of Patterson. And I believe that councils should work in the sense where we have to prioritize people. Not our argument, we have to listen more, argue less. That's what I'm looking for, for the next year. So with that being said, Council President, we have to keep Patterson in our mind regardless whatever we do. With that expectation, I congratulate both of you one more time, and my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilman Velez?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First of all, I want to say congratulations, my sister, one of the two amigos. We got three. Councilwoman Large, Dr. Lysa Mims, congratulations. Six years waiting, you know? And we got to continue working. We got to continue working. To the community out there, let me make this loud and clear. This morning, I received a text. Not a, well, email. A roll call for the meeting today. And those that was in that thread in the meeting, on the email, noticed that I responded that I was not going to be in attendance in the meeting today. I was out of the city, down south. Even McCoy called me to say, "How you doing?" What did I tell you, Councilman McCoy? I was not going to be in the meeting today. And as a person that has experience, he said, "By law, you need to be there." So I said, "I don't want to be part of the United States federal unit that they come and arrest you, you have to come and vote," right? But yes, I'm here. Still, when the vote of Councilwoman passed, I asked my colleague, "Who's the next VP?" He said, "I don't know." He didn't even share with me that he was going to nominate me. God is good. Because what happened today here, it was set from yesterday on. Because in the past, I even text Councilwoman Davila the other day. I think it was Thursday or Wednesday. "Will you support me for Council President?" And she said, "No." So that was not a surprise, because she never supported me. That was not a surprise. She never supported me for Council President. And, and let me say this, I'm not upset, I'm happy. You know why? Because in the, this past eight years, I've been sitting in this council. I've been working with every of my colleagues to get the job done. The before and after. That's a lesson for a lot of people. Going out there, on time, not time, be presses in places. You know, I am blessed that I could do it, and I could continue doing it. And Councilwoman Mims, as you know, I work with everyone, agreed or disagreed. In the past, when I was the Chair of DPW, before I left the Chair of DPW, there was a list of more than 10 streets in the fourth, in the, in the first ward to change directions and this and that. The Councilman, he asked me to put it on the agenda. I said, "Let's move it forward because it's for the first ward, and we need to work towards that war united." True or not, Councilman? Because when I sit here, I don't look at who war is it. I look at Patterson needs us to work together. And we're going to continue working together. Now, I always say, "It's easy through here, but have it in here." "It's easy through the mouth, but have it in here and do it with action." And last day, the other day, I said in the Peruvian parade, "It's, it's easy to call for unity." People are talking about ceasefire for years. People even talking ceasefire this past month. And the bomb are still shooting back and forth, back and forth. If that's the real unity that the city wants, I always say, "Go back to the tape on 2024, 2023, from 2018, every July 1st, that they do a new organization meeting about unity, about being together." So I know, Councilwoman Mims, because I said at the beginning, you, me, and probably some people here have something above. Before we do our decision, we make sure that our decision is aligned with the heart of God. And let, and let me say this loud and clear. Nothing, you could throw pictures from over there and put it in the, in the social media. You could slander me, you could do a lot of stuff, but nobody's going to take me the heart to serve this community and continue serving because the people of the fifth ward put me here. And I got to continue working, leaving the legacy of Maria Magda that sat here, working hard for everyone, no matter where they come from, no color what they have or what religion they had. And I got to continue to do it with all my heart. Last but not least, I know some people come here and they do the freedom speech. But Assemblywoman, they took more time than me. Thank you. Some people come here and, and they could exercise the freedom of speech. Corporate Council, I don't know where he at, but we have spoke this before. This gentleman is paid by the taxpayer money. He's a city employee. He's a legislative aide from Councilman Jackson. I understand that he's doing a freedom of speech. I understand that he come in here and express himself. But to receive slander statement and accusation and all that stuff, something had to be done. While the taxpayer money is paying this guy to come here and, and deliver all his anger against us, I don't think, something's wrong. I recall Councilman
Councilman Velez?
I, I will wrap up. Councilman McCoy could testify on this. When I was in the other side of, of this, of this chambers, as a resident and pastor, never came there to that podium to slander any mayor sitting there or any Councilman sitting here. I used to bring my ideas, I see the thing, I bring it up and work towards it. Corporate Council put a question on the ta, on the floor regarding a legislative aide. I understand they could use a freedom of speech, but he's a city employee, and he getting paid by taxpayer money. I don't know how to separate that without violating his right of expressing, but at the same time, it'll match being a aide for the city and then coming down here as a resident and attack us.
Councilman Velez?
Point of order, Council President?
So, so
Councilman Velez?
Yes, Council President?
Yes, I, I just want to reiterate, because I want to share, show fairness. It is extremely hot in the chambers. We have a lot of elders. We only have seven items on the agenda, which should not take that long. But I know we have a lot that we want to talk about, but I'm just asking if we can wrap it up. There will be, there will be a lot of time in between, um, to have that conversation. But Councilman Velez, if you could just, you know, come to a close, please.
Point of order, Council President?
After, point of order is addressed after he finished, finishes his statement. He's in the middle of roll call, Councilman.
So, thank you, Council President. And last but not least, Mr. Mayor, you have gave order to send the employees of the Board of Health because the temperature was more than 90 degrees inside. In here is 90, is 85 degrees in here, outside is 95 degrees. I don't know what's the difference, but we have to take that in consideration. Saying that, Council President, thank you for the consideration on it. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Council President?
Just to address the point of order, Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Council President.
Please be brief.
And just for a point of clarity, whenever it is a point of order called, according to Robert's rules, it's, it's the point of orders is, is heard at that moment. And if Councilman Velez, uh, so cares to, um, to utilize slander when he's speaking about myself, he should have an accompanying, uh, law. And as a point of order, we cannot just indoctrinate our own perspectives and opinions. We operate by rule of law. We're governed by laws set by the state. We're governed by laws that we actually adopt. And I would appreciate it, Council President, if, if council members are going to, um, place items, place motions on the floor, that we at least understand that it's, it's, uh, it's in accordance to how the process and procedures of this council works. His opinion may be one thing, his feelings may be one thing, but your feelings don't matter here. We operate by way of a law.
Thank, thank you for that point of reference, Councilman Jackson. And so I'm going to make a request again now as the sitting Pres, Council President. I would like to purchase, I would like to have purchase Robert rules of orders for all of our council members, and I just want to state on the record. If someone is in the middle of roll call, a point of order does not override the person that is in the midst of speaking to, to vote. Point of order will be addressed after that person votes, and then it is taken. There is no such thing as a point of order that is called in the middle of somebody going to vote. So I want to put that, but that will be on record. But let me close because I'm going to be the change that I want to see. And we're going to, you're going to continue to hear me say that. First and foremost, the request is, the, the sheet will be out from 6:30, from 6:15 to 7:15, as stated. The sheet will be taken by our secretaries. Someone comes in at that point, after that time, they will see the secretary. They will come and let me know what the situation is. They will have a conversation, and then will be permitted at that moment. But we cannot allow the sheet to be left out there until 10 and 11 o'clock at night. We just can't do that, and we're not going to do it. The second thing we will put in place, which is a part of our ordinance, is that when we're going to close or to vote, council members only have two minutes. I understand that there's a lot of things we want to say, but we have to follow the orders and the decorum that is listed in our ordinance. So as that stated, Madam Clerk, my vote is yes. Um, to all of our residents that are watching and to those present, I apologize that there is no AC air conditioner here in the building. Thank you to, um, Councilman Jackson for mentioning the water and that it's being, being dispersed to everyone. But let's move forward. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes to close public portion.
Thank you, Council President. The votes are nine in favor, none against. The public portion is hereby closed.
Madam Clerk, let's move to the agenda. Item number one, Madam Clerk.
Item number one, resolution setting the contents of the annual meeting notice pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, including time of meetings of the municipal council for July 8th, 2025 through July 1st, 2026. Also addressing virtual meetings and scope of meetings and setting the location as the City Hall Council Chambers, 155 Market Street, Patterson, New Jersey. City Clerk, Resolution Number 25, Code in 340.
So moved, second.
Moved by Councilwoman Davila, second by Councilman Cotton. Roll call on item number one, Madam Clerk.
Roll call on item number one, Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davila?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before I vote, Corporation Council, with regard to, and I understand we're setting the calendar here, but with regard to that item that was approved at last week's, uh, consent agenda, I need to address that and bring that back forward. Those items include the first ward. I know it's, it's not pertaining to this item, but before the 45-day, um, provision expires for that item, I need to have that item readdressed for those three-family houses on 25 by 100s. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Kalik?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councilman Mendez?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Omar?
Yes.
Councilman Newton?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes.
Thank you. Votes are nine in favor, none against. Item number one is hereby adopted.
Item number two, Madam Clerk?
Item number two, resolution designating newspapers to receive notice of council meetings under the Sunshine Law. City Clerk, item Resolution Number 25:341.
Can we have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Mendez, second by Councilwoman Davila. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Roll call on item number two for adoption. Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davila? Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Kalik?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Mendez?
Yes.
Councilman Omar?
Yes.
Councilman Uden?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes.
Votes are not, I'm sorry.
So I just want to say for this- Number seven. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. The votes are nine in favor, none against. Item number two is hereby adopted.
Item number seven, Madam Clerk?
Number seven? Sure, okay. Item number seven, resolution of the City of Patterson authorizing the submission of a request to the New Jersey Urban Enterprise Zone Authority for Patterson UEZ Emergency Road Restoration Project, 2025 through 2026, in the city's urban enterprise zone in an amount not to exceed $3,982,743. This is-
Can we get a motion? So moved. Moved by Councilwoman Davila, second by Councilman Uden and Councilman Mendez. Discussion, Councilman Velez.
Thank you, Council President.
One second, Councilman Velez. Did you get the motions?
I did not.
Motion by Councilwoman Davila, second by Councilman Uden and Councilman Mendez. Discussion, Councilman Velez.
Thank you, Council President. Let me let me be clear on something here. If I don't, if I don't get it right, let me try to get it right. So, Council President, I was looking at the proposed UEZ 2025 road resurfacing. I went into the UEZ road resurfacing project, emergency road resurfacing grant, or whatever they call it here in this paper. But it says that this money is only used to be used in the quarter or UEZ, okay? And/or infrastructure in the UEZ quarters designated as a UEZ. I noticed here the list, are they good streets, you know, they need to be resurfaced? But I could count with my hands that you probably have only one or two there from the county, sorry, UEZ zone. The other one are Inside Street, like Plum Street, like Beach Street, Nor Brockley. Nor Brockley is behind, you know, Marshall Street that is not a UEZ zone, you know? That's a UEZ zone?
Yes.
You telling me that Henkley's Post with the bars and all that stuff? For one business is UEZ zone?
That one.
So, just to-
So, I just want, I just want to, he could bring, if it's possible, Mr. Mayor or the BA, what's the statute that, you know, whatever UEZ rules allows that? Because my reading here is saying that infrastructure has to be, the money has to be invested in UEZ quarters or industrial areas. So-
Madam President?
Council, Mr. Mayor, please.
Thank you. There's a map attached in addition to the roads that have been listed for resurfacing. I want to give credit to our UEZ Director, Dipto Roy. He identified $4 million in urban enterprise zone funding that we could use to resurface our roads. And our engineer, Ben DiMario, was very meticulous in using the map and then cross pollinating it to make sure that we identify the appropriate streets that fall within that urban enterprise zone. This is something that's never been done in this city before, utilizing urban enterprise zone money for road resurfacing. So we are not burdening the general operating budget. We are identifying a source outside of where we normally find the money. For example, we use CDBG, we've used ARP, we've also used state aid. But in this instance, now we have UEZ money and we strongly urge that you support this. These are 35 streets. And the breakdown is, seven of those streets are in the first ward, seven are in the second ward, four are in the third ward, five are in the fourth ward, primarily Bunker Hill, which is a business district. Four are in the fifth ward and six are in the sixth ward. So the two wards, first and second, have seven each.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to come, one second, Councilman Mendez. I also want to commend our director for utilizing the map to pinpoint based on our priority list that was requested some years ago, that we were create a priority listing of all the streets across the city, which was a request I made. And this council agreed to it. And based on that priority list and some of the council members here that advocated for these streets, I'm happy to say that they are here. So I know they have some concerns or questions, but this is what they've asked for. To the public that is viewing, I want you to know that from there, there are estimate of $4 million that will not have to be taxpayer dollars that we identified through urban enterprise zone dollars that will cover streets in every single ward of the city that are needed.
Yes.
I will be able to, and if you'd like to go on our website, it's posted, I will also post them as well. Great job to our UEZ Director, working alongside with our committees here to make sure that our streets get repaid.
Councilman Mendez?
Thank you, thank you, Council President.
I haven't finished.
Just a recommendation.
Council President, I mean, because I haven't finished.
You are not done? Okay. Councilman Velez and then Councilman Mendez.
So, Mr. Mayor, so I like that you went out and think out of the box when to use the funding for UEZ now, right? But when it comes up to patrol and cameras and cleaning quarters or whatever, please also think out of the box and put all the UEZ zone into effect. Because we just cannot clean Broadway or, you know, or Market Street or Park Avenue just center blocks because only that's what we cover for that little space there. So to expand the service of the funding UEZ in the city pass, it will be nice. So same way, you expanding this funding to go in different street, there are needed. So to make sure that all the service expands to that. Last but not least, Council President, I requested a list because I recall 2022, 2023, resurfaced grants came in and we include some of those street like Madison Street, Beach Street, Morton Street. So we don't want to, we don't want to put some street that already supposed to be resurfaced with another grant. And now we're using that as to pitch for that money and then divert the money to another place.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Councilman Velez. Councilman Mendez?
Thank you, Council President. So the question that I have is, based on the list, we have four different road in the third ward. We have East 15 between River Street and Fifth Avenue. But we also have East 24 between Route 20 and Fifth Avenue. Based on the map, Mayor, it's the same UEZ zone, East 24, East 23, they're in totally disrepair. So I would like to know how can we include it in this list? Because if you look at the condition of East 15, it's not as bad as East 24, East 23. I mean, and I will tell you, it's not as bad. It might maybe have like one pothole.
Yeah.
I will say, but those two road, they really need to be fixed. And now we could utilize the UEZ funding that we have now. And, you know, because I know there's other plan for that side jump up. I would like to see that done.
So, Councilman Mendez, Councilman Mendez, that's a good point of reference. Administration, just take that point of reference. We could talk about it another time. We're ready to vote. These are just recommendations. It does not impact what we have here on this list. At this point, Madam Clerk, roll call.
I wanted to elaborate on something, Council President.
Mayor.
Within a minute, within a minute. I could do this within a minute, within a minute.
We'll come back to it, Mayor. We'll come back because then it's going to open the floor for a rebuttal. Madam Clerk, roll call, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Roll call on item number seven, and I did not get to announce the department. And the resolution number is Economic Development Resolution Number 25:346. Councilwoman Cotton? Councilwoman Davila?
Yes.
Councilman Kalik?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This is a big win for Patterson. Thank you, Director Dipto Roy. Also, you see every ward is getting streets. Second ward got eight of them. And once again, thank you, Director. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councilman Mendez?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I've been a strong supporter of the resurfacing of our road, the director. Great job that we utilized this UEZ funding. I believe it's the first time that we're doing that. Let's pay attention to those two locations because we got to get it done and it's within the map. But I've been saying, my vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councilman Omar?
Director, I commend you. Great job. My vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilman Uden?
It's a good move, for sure. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman Velez.
Thank you for clarification with that map that I still don't see. I thought it was a highlighter map. But that's why we have workshop and presentation. That's why, Mayor, the communication starts to start flowing. You cannot just bring a document here today and just go approve it. We don't have that conversation. If we have that conversation, then it's easy and we could avoid a lot of questions. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Council President.
Let's be the change we want to see. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you. The votes are eight in favor, one absent. Item number seven is hereby-
Council President.
Vote, item number six, Madam Clerk?
Just wanted to provide an update.
One second, Mayor. Item number six, Madam Clerk?
Item number six is a resolution reappointing Robert W. Parchment to the City of Patterson Board of Adjustment, sponsored by Councilman Michael Jackson, City Council, Resolution Number 25:345.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion.
Moved by Councilwoman Cotton and Jackson, second by Councilman Kalik.
Second.
Second, Councilman Uden.
Discussion. Discussion.
Councilman Velez.
I don't know if Madam Clerk could testify on this, but in the past, there used to be resolution. They used to put the address of the Commissioner on the resolution and way back, that was in the past.
I can't hear what he's-
No?
That's Corporation Council. Yeah, any question?
There's no, I, Council President, I'm just saying, way back, I'm not saying now, way back, they used to do it. I don't know if the norm has changed. Way back, even a councilable used to be appointed and they put the address there.
So, we-
Because we don't have even a resume from this individual. I love the one that I see here from Vivian Gaines, but, you know, put a resume and everything, but, you know.
Great, great, great point of reference. He is a reappointment. When he initially was appointed, his resume was attached. So if you need that information, I'm sure the clerk or one of the secretaries could provide that with you. He is a reappointment, which is different from a new appointment where you will see the information is attached. He is being reappointed. And that's why you don't see the address. But if you check with the Secretary of Madam Clerk's office, they could provide you with that information.
Love the address.
Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Roll call on item number six, Councilwoman Cotton. I'm sorry, I didn't hear your vote, Councilwoman. Your microphone is down.
Who's voting now?
Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davila?
Yes.
Councilman Kalik?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Mendez?
Yes.
Councilman Omar?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Uden?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
No.
Council President?
Yes.
Thank you. The votes are seven in favor, one against, one absent. Item number six is hereby adopted.
Item number five, Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Item number five, resolution reappointing Mohammed Alam to the Patterson Board of Adjustment, sponsored by Councilman Shaheen Kalik. Council, City Council, Resolution Number 25:344.
Moved by Councilman Kalik, second by Councilwoman Davila, Councilman Uden.
It says Kalik?
Number five.
It says Kalik or Uden?
Kalik, number five.
No, number five is Councilman Kalik. Roll call, Madam Clerk? One second, Madam Clerk.
My appointment on the body of the resolution.
Is wrong, yeah.
That discussion.
The discussion.
Discussion, Councilman Kalik.
Number five.
It should not be alternate. It should be a-
It should not be alternate.
Correct, that is correct.
It should not be alternate. We, I brought this issue up before. And as you know,
You are absolutely correct, Councilman Kalik. We had a previous discussion. We had a previous discussion where when someone new is coming on, those new appointments are alternates. And then it goes by seniority. So for example, your person, as well as Councilman Mendez's person, should be moving into voting privilege. Me being the tenured, my person is alternate one. And then the other appointment will be alternate two. That is how it operates. So you are correct. Corporation Council, can you make this adjustment?
Actually, the adjustment is there already. I'm sorry, I did not follow it. On the fifth, now therefore.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to make-
I read the first word, that's why I-
No problem, Councilman Kalik. Roll call, Madam Clerk?
So you have to correct the body too?
No, it's fine.
Oh, okay.
Roll call on item number five, Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davila?
Congratulations once again on your reappointment. My vote is yes.
Councilman Kalik?
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Mendez?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Omar?
Yes.
Councilman Uden?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Velez, Council President?
Council President?
Yes.
Thank you. The votes are eight in favor, one absent. Item number five is hereby adopted.
Item number four, Madam Clerk?
Item number four, resolution appointing Vivian Gaines to the City of Patterson Board of Adjustment, sponsored by Councilwoman Dr. Lelisa Memm, City Council, Resolution Number 25:343.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Memm, second by Councilwoman Davila and Council and Cotton and Councilman Uden. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number four.
Roll call on item number four, Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davila?
I want to thank you, Council President, for the clarification. There's been a lot of confusions year after year. Somewhere along the lines, things did not go correctly, but we are here now doing right. A new person coming on board cannot become a full voting member without going through its proper training, being a board certified member, and then going through being an alternate one and alternate two and so forth. So with that said, I'm so looking forward to seeing Mrs. Gaines, you know, come on board. She has been instrumental in our educational system. She is a true Pattersonian. She loves our city and I know she's going to do right by the board and Patterson. Congratulations, Commissioner Gaines.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Kalik?
Congratulations. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Mendez?
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Omar?
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Uden?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
100% yes.
Council President?
So I first want to thank Trenet's Barbie Watkins. I had an opportunity of appointing her and she served for six years in this capacity. She's done a phenomenal job. But I believe that as we continue to grow and move, that we give other people an opportunity. I think Ms. Gaines will do a phenomenal job. She's an educator. Her husband knows real estate and development. I think it would be an add, a value add to that particular board. And we want to continue to do and to see and be the change that we want to see. My vote is yes.
Thank you. The votes are eight in favor, one absent. Item number four is hereby adopted.
Item, Madam Clerk, last item on the agenda, item number three, Madam Clerk.
Item number three is a resolution appointing Akaz Ali to the City of Patterson Board of Adjustment, sponsored by Councilwoman at Large, MD Ford Uden, City Council Resolution Number 25:342.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Uden, second by Councilwoman Davila, Councilman Mendez. Discussion.
Yes, there is a discussion. So I was reading, and that's why I said thank you for the clarification. I did read that the item says they're a full voting member and they are actually an alternate two. So let the record reflect, Corporation Council, that that needs to be amended to indicate alternate two. So let the record reflect, Corporation Council, that there, that needs to be amended to indicate, um, alternate two. Again, the previous, just to make it point, the previous appointment was a full appointment. The councilman now is appointing somebody new, just like our Council President. Therefore, just bringing that clarification, the body of the resolution does not reflect that.
Yeah, so just a, just to, uh, to reiterate, right, we had this in the past. When a new person is being appointed to the board, if there has been someone that has been alternate one and two, those appointments are moved up and the new appointments become alternates one and two. If there are two people being brought on and the two are being moved up at the same time, the councilperson with the seniority becomes alternate one and the other will be alternate two. That has been the practice of this council. As we can see, I'm grateful when I came on, my, my, um, person was not able to serve for a few years, and then she was able to get an opportunity to be a part of the voting body. So that is the process. We have to be fair across the board. There's people that's been waiting as alternates, and so we have to ensure that everyone has the opportunity to serve in a voting capacity. Councilman Oden?
Uh, thank you, Council President. Every time appointment comes, we debate and it doesn't sound good for the appointees. And it looks like that we are debating on them. Actually, there should be a clarification of the ordinance that we are working on. And that should come from the Corporation Council or whether we should bring some kind of amendment clarification on the paper instead of fighting every single time we appoint someone. That's one thing. Second thing is when it's at alternate one and two, who decides that? Is it comes from the chairperson of the board or it comes to the council? That is clarification as well.
Okay, so just for alternate one and two, that is done by seniority. So if, if someone has been on the council-
I need, I need, I need the answer from the Corporation Council.
I, I didn't hear you.
I need the answer from the Corporation Council, legal advice.
Councilwoman, um-
Council, um, wait, one second. Corporation Council?
Council President, can you hear me?
I love it, you're gonna say-
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to respond. Thank you, Councilman Oden, for that inquiry. I believe Dr. Mendez is correct. The past practice has been, as she stated, of course, we can enshrine the practice in the ordinance at the council's suggestion. It'd be up to council to vote and approve that. So it's currently not in the ordinance, although that's been the past practice. And of course, these items are subject to council's review and approval of both the appointments as well as amending the ordinance.
Thank you for that clarity, Councilman Colleague.
Council President?
Actually, I wasn't gonna speak, but for clarification again, twenty twenty, the same issue came up with my appointment. My appointment was a full-time appointment. I just want everyone to refresh your memory. He was a full-time appointment. Meantime, as you recall, in twenty twenty, my election was tied at the first time with the shenanigan. Then I won in November. Since there was a lapse, lapse in four or five months, my regular appointment was taken out and they put it in as an alternate. So I don't think we need any, any more discussion. So it's, I mean, it's been prospecting. I, I've been waiting, what, four?
Four years.
Years now.
Four years.
Four, four, five years for my person to become a regular voting member.
Yes, I, I think, um-
I'm just clarifying.
Yes.
At the same time, I brought this amendment to the ordinance that we have in place as well.
Yes.
Most of the councilmember reclined, refused to, to update the ordinance. And Councilman Oden was against it as well, against the ordinance. Now, it's not convenient for you, you want to read the, the, the ordinance and put it on the record and want to, come on. Let's, let's work as we've been working with this ordinance and, and move forward.
Thank you, Councilman. Can I just ask a favor? This is the last item, and I know we'll, there's gonna be a reiteration. Can we just go to roll call and then whatever comments you have, you can make them during roll call?
Council President?
Can we do that?
Uh, no, but I got some requests.
Okay, uh, Councilwoman Cotton, then Councilman Velez.
All right, it's really not, it's really not much to go through anymore. I've been following this since twenty twelve. My appointment power was only there five years before they became an alternate. And it, it is not, you know, I, I say it again and I say it all the time. You don't like the answer, but that's the answer.
That's the answer.
Your appointment is an alternate and nobody's not gonna change it. You gotta move up in rank. If you become elected again in twenty twenty-six, then you hopefully, then your appointment again will then move up. That's how, that's how it goes.
Council President?
If you, if you, if you, um, I'm a councilwoman, if I change my appointment to another name, then that appointment now becomes an alternate, even though I'm still a councilwoman, but I changed my appointment. I changed the person who was there before that. So that person can't be an alternate now. They gotta become, I mean, can't be permanent. They gotta become alternate. That's what we're trying to get going.
Thank you. Roll call, Madam Clerk? Thank you, Councilwoman Cotton. Roll call, Madam Clerk? Roll call. Any comments can be made at roll call. Roll call, Madam Clerk?
So you, you stop me and you let her speak?
That's cool.
Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Roll call on item number three, Councilwoman Cotton?
We're voting on it. We're voting on it as an alternate two.
Two, okay.
Right, so we're voting on the amendment first.
Roll call on item number three as amended.
It's an amendment?
With an amendment, yes.
It has to be stated, we're voting on item three per, per the amendment as an alternate number two. Roll call.
Council President, may I very briefly?
Yes, Corporation Council?
Uh, for the purposes of this, I think it should be clearly stated that there's an amendment being made.
Yes.
Um, a vote on the amendment, and then if the amendment passes, then a vote to approve.
So can I get a motion for the amendment to-
So move.
To change the language to state-
Council President?
Uh, motion on the floor by Councilman Colleague, second by Councilwoman Davila, discussion?
Right, so-
Councilman Colleague, Councilman Oden?
Uh, thank you. I don't mind to go with whatever law says. I'm, I'm completely obeyed that. But the point is every time the question arises, I know all councilmember becomes the attorneys because of not clarification on the ordinance. And that's why we all play as an acting attorneys and explain the laws, and we should not have done that. We should clarify on the paper instead of just strating every time what happened in the past, number one. Number two, when you said this amendment needed for this one and we need to vote for amendment, what happened to the other commissioner that was stated alternate by mistake on the paper? Why we did not do the amendment on the paper?
Great question. When I called into the clerk's office, because I guess you're referring to my appointment, because I was familiar with what the process is, I made the request through Madam Clerk, our secretary and Corporation Council, that my new person coming on was alternate one. So I was very clear as to what it was, so I don't need to make an amendment. My request was to put them in the proper perspective, which is clearly outlined in the resolution. Roll call on the amendment, Madam Clerk?
Roll call to amend item number three, Councilwoman Cotton? Councilman Colleague?
Yes, amending to alternate two.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Davila. Thank you.
It's fine.
Councilman Colleague?
Yes.
Councilman Mendez?
Yes.
Councilman Omar?
Yes.
Councilman Oden?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
This is the, this is the vote for finish this topic? Oh, for amendment? Okay, yes.
You said yes, okay. Council President?
Yes, Madam Clerk?
All right, the votes are eight in favor, one absent. Roll call to vote on item number three for-
As amended.
As amended for adoption. Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davila?
Yes.
Councilman Colleague?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I know this individual Akas Ali, I know he will do a great job in the Board of Adjustment. Alternate does not mean that he doesn't get to vote. Many time, many of the other, other commissioner are absent. That's when he needs, he gets to step in. And I'm, I wish him best of luck. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Mendez?
Thank, thank you, Madam Clerk. I do apologize. When my moms call, call me, I gotta, I gotta pick up the phone. I better pick up the phone, you know, just. But, you know, just for the record, you know, my appointment, the Board of Adjustment is being, is being waited for since twenty twenty now. The now, this year, that appointment will have voting power. So I know the process is there. So hopefully, you know, so, you know, it will be completed. That board is very important for the city and, and they, they gotta continue the meeting without interruption. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Omar?
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councilman Oden?
Before I vote, I, one thing I just want to state that I believe it's a great addition in the Board of Adjustment. He's a strong voice, and I think Board of Adjustment should work better and faster. And this is very important. Many projects are on hold for many, many years. So we, when you say we need to move the city forward, we have to work with all the boards to make sure that all the boards working in function as well, because last about a year, so they were not in function. So with that being said, with that expectation, the hope of the better Patterson for next tomorrow from tomorrow, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Council President?
So for me, no, no matter where-
I'm sorry, Councilman Velez. I'm so sorry.
Okay, I'll go start again. For me, no matter if it's a regular member or alternative member, please, when that secretary, Board Secretary call you for, have a quorum, be here. Those contractors pays a lot of money, those studies cost a lot of money, and also things out of the box, you know. Go out there, look at the project. Don't go by political motivated agendas. Just go by what you see and, and you study on, on the situation. Last but not least, Madam B.A., to, to the chair, I know we, we, we increase the stipend for those commissioner. Are the, I just want to know if the alternate, alternate commissioner are getting paid also when they come in, right? Right? Okay, that's, that's important. So making sure the agenda is complete, no matter if you're regular or alternate, make sure that they, they have a quorum for those meeting. Saying that, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman. Council President?
Thank you. Great points of reference. Councilman Velez, my vote is yes.
Thank you. The votes are eight in favor, one absent. Item number three is hereby adopted as amended.
Motion to close.
So move.
Second.
Motion to close by Councilman Velez, second by Councilwoman Davila and Councilman Mendez. Madam Clerk, roll call to close our reorganization meeting of July first.
Roll call to close the reorganization meeting, Councilwoman Cotton?
She laughed.
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Davila?
Thank you very much. Once again, I will be brief. I just want to say congratulations once again to Councilwoman Dr. Lelisa Memm's great first meeting, although you've ran this meeting before, but great first meeting as the actual City Council President. Thank you to the community. Thank you to the outgoing president for all your work. And I also wanted to say that we had some discussions today concerning some of the Board of Adjustment appointments. They have nothing to do with the individual, but with the position. And I know we have our Vice Chair of the Board of Adjustment here. Thank you for coming and thank you for serving. Thank you for you wanting to serve this city, all right, and do right by the people in the Board of Adjustment. I know our chair is watching as well, so to our Chair, Joelle Rohim, thank you as well. And to everyone, Madam Clerk, I know this is tough, it's hot, but I want to say thank you for the fans. They worked very, very well and I appreciate it. To the secretaries, to everyone, to my colleagues. Bye-bye. My vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilman Colleague?
Good night, everyone. My vote is yes.
Councilman Mendez?
It's afternoon, Council. Still, not yet, you know, we're leaving early today. But, you know, once again, congratulations to Council President and Council VP, your position. It's, as I mentioned before, we're facing a lot of challenges in this city. We gotta clean this city. We gotta get the city back on track, we definitely. And we gotta make sure that every decision that we make here impact our resident in a positive way, and that's what we should be focusing on. My Assemblywoman, it's great to see you. It's hot, but you stay all the way until the end. We love you, we appreciate you, and may God continue to bless you. Commissioner O'Car, it's always a pleasure to see you. And the leader of the Jamaican community, Mr. Keith Watson, always great to see you. Always great to see you here. So Patterson, let's pray for our city, because, you know, we have a very important decision ahead of us. Corporation Council, I love to see you losing weight. You almost look like me. Not yet, not yet, but you look great. You look sharp. You, you know, you're making me go back to the gym. So God bless you, Patterson. Council Colleague, always a pleasure. Council Velez?
Thank you.
Ibrahim, great, 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 great meeting. Good afternoon. My vote is yes.
Councilman Omar?
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councilman Velez?
I want to thank my two aides, Villia Villanueva and Nairobi Valga for being here and always being, working out there. Thank you. And also, a, a, a good, a good advice to my colleagues, you know, be careful with this. If you go to send a text to the mayor, make sure you send it to the mayor, not to me, talking about me. Make sure you send it to the mayor, not to me, talking about me. Last but not least, I welcome to the community to the Jamaican festival, right? We all gonna be there. We all, for real, not for one day. Yaman, not one day, all the day. So saying that, listen, I love what I do. I gotta stay positive. I gotta stay focused. The community me, me, needs me, and we're gonna continue working together. See you next year at the same time. Watch the message. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman. Council President?
So once again, I just want to thank my council colleagues for the vote of confidence unanimously to become the City Council President. There are changes that will be taking place. Council committee assignments will be readily available before our first meeting on next week, so that we can get to our committee assignments and we can move the ball and, and work together. My prayer is that we will work together. Please, I ask, I beg the community, I am a new council president. Give me the opportunity to serve and to lead, as I would do the same for you. Thank you so much. And I also want to congratulate, no one said it, Councilwoman Davila, becoming the Chair of the Patterson Democratic County Committee and myself as serving as the co-chair of the Patterson Democratic County Committee. We're looking forward on both levels to make sure that Patterson unifies, strengthens, empowers, and it builds together. Let us be the change we want to see. Madam Clerk, our secretaries, our officer in charge, Murray, was here. Our Director, Jerry Spezia, or Melinda Raphael, Madam, Mr. B.A., the mayor was here, Corporation Council, and to Gabby from Tap into, and our police officers, and to everyone that's come out. Let's continue to build and not battle. Looking forward to a great and successful year. Lots of work to be done, but we will be the change that we want to see. Madam Clerk, my vote? Oh, to my good friend, Commissioner O'Car, he has an event with John, John J., Awards of Excellence Independence Gala on July nineteenth at seven P.M. Also, I see Councilman Bill McCoy here for Jamaica Day in August. August second and third. I'm looking forward to my festival. You know, I come for festival every year. So let's make sure, a lot of great events that are going on. We support, we celebrate, we apologize once again. Please, go get a drink of Kool-Aid or water or soda and cool off. Have a great day, everyone. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk. Oh, welcome back to our Secretary, Sophia. Continue to pray for Madam Clerk.
Yes, Council, Council President, before I announce the votes on behalf of this-
One second, Council colleagues.
Before I announce the votes, on behalf of the City Clerk and the City Council staff, we'd like to congratulate you as our new president and Councilwoman Davila as our new Vice President. The votes are six in favor-
Before you announce the votes, August first is the Jamaica flag raising. I just want to announce that.
Okay, the votes are six in favor, three absent. The reorganization meeting of, what is this? July first, two thousand twenty-five is hereby adjourned. Good night, Patterson.